I want to get started here on time and introduce you to the two council members joining me tonight and talk about the format, of which there's very little. But it's pretty much an old-fashioned town hall, but I'm excited to have tonight council member Henry Legay.
Welcome. It's the afternoon.
And in case you haven't seen him before, council member, new council member appointee, Dennis Brown, who is here tonight. As Dennis had mentioned, there's no replacing Keith McMahon, that's for sure. He's one of a kind, but Dennis is going to do a great job filling the remainder of his term, of Keith's term. You'll get to know more, maybe Dennis, in a little while. You can introduce yourself to those that may not know you and share a few minutes of your background and your passions. But tonight's format, the same as our last town hall, which is a casual, kind of an old-fashioned town hall. With Arizona open meeting laws, it puts a little crink into your casualness. So we have to be specific to have fewer than a quorum of the town council in order to have kind of a wide-open sharing of ideas and discussion. Otherwise, you have to have it agendized and have everything laid out and you can't really move off of that agenda. But that's why we have two council members and myself here, so we're short a quorum. That's why the other council members are not allowed to come tonight, and that's why we're rotating two council members at every town hall. So we've had Mike and Dennis were here, the first one. Dennis Cantino, DC, and this is DB. And now we've got the opportunity to have council member Legay and council member Brown. We do have a couple of things on the agenda, just to point out, we're going to do a review, maybe to get the ideas flowing and educate ourselves about emergency services tonight and then also about parks and recreation. So we've got some slides to share, and I will go through those and get those started now. We also have treats, and those, we held off the cobbler last time until after the, everybody endured the town hall. But since we're starting at the later one, it's not the weekend, you guys can feel free to help yourself to brownies out there at any time. You don't have to endure the entire town hall before you get your treat of brownies. So I'll go through some slides and then I'll ask for if there's any questions. And I would suggest, probably before we get into whatever else is on your mind, which is also a big reason why we're here, a casual environment, for you to bring up anything that's on your mind. And we had quite a bit of that the first town hall, and I think we helped some folks out, bring some things to light that we may not have been aware of. So let's go through the slides on fire, and then police, and then parks and recreation, and then we can open it up for questions. And we have some great folks from staff here. Thanks for staying late tonight and being here. We've got our fire, and we've got our parks and recreation, our town manager Rick Davis right here. If you haven't met Rick, make sure you shake Rick's hand. Our deputy town manager Julie Getty is here, our fire chief's here, of course Captain Klein Eitz is here. And boy, you know, there's quite a few folks from the staff and our services here, so thank you for being here to support us and answer questions if the council can't help as well. All right, let's get into fire. Overview of the fire station locations, if you are not aware. The fire stations have three locations noted right now, two of which are in operation, one on Palisades and one on Saguaro, on the south end of Saguaro Boulevard, just past the Denny's. If you've been on Shea and Saguaro, head down Saguaro in the more residential area, and you'll come across a nice fire station there. That's the fire station that is being considered for relocation to the Shea Boulevard site, which is, for the most part, up the hill as you approach the, a little bit past the midway point, as you go from Fountain Hills Boulevard up Shea Boulevard to Palisades on the right-hand side. That's the site that we are hoping to get stimulus dollars for. We've got our eye on that, and I'm sure if you have additional questions, Chief Lagreca will be able to speak to that. That location will benefit quite a few folks where we currently have some challenges and response times that we'd like to shorten. Also, part of our fire station locations are looking to have a supplemental response area for emergency medical. That would be at or near the Frye's Shopping Center for, as the majority of significant health-related responses are ambulance, ambulatory, or EMS, we're hoping to get that even closer in the interim before a station is built. Here's Rural Metro, our fire chief organizational chart. Saw Randy Roberts today, our assistant fire chief. If you haven't met Ron, Randy, another terrific guy. And then it's broken up by the two stations, and the organizational structure there points out who our captains are at each of the stations. And I think we're served quite well, and it's probably an organization that gets more kudos from their service. Maybe they're on par with the sheriff's office. Maybe they're on par. I'll have to think about that one. But they do a, yeah, there you go. More like parks, sure. And here's some of the equipment we've got there. They've got a big one, they've got a small one. If you have any more technical questions, we'll get the chief up there. I know we have one with a very short wheelbase that can pump water because we have a need to get up and into the tougher terrain to get water on fires. And I would suspect outside of emergency medical, that affects each of us individually at times. Wildfires are probably the bigger threat and concern for our community, and as those can spread very quickly and do much damage to property and also to people if they're not aware. So we have to get to those fires quickly. And here are the staff vehicles, so that they can respond quickly wherever they're at. That's our newer Ford down there on the bottom. If you get a chance, check it out, pretty cool vehicle. Of course, our crews are responsible for more than just fires. Emergency management planning is one of them. We're looking to hopefully get a grant as well for Emergency Operations Center that we really don't have at this point. Part of the planning would be a big part of our emergency management planning, is a big part of making sure we're prepared for emergencies. Of course, emergency response, fire protection, and being a part of our community is, as we've been fortunate to have, the firefighters involved in our community with the kids and the various service organizations, they are certainly a part of our community. Here are some of the things that they do. They inspect a lot of buildings, businesses that are operating, properties that are under construction, cooperative response, training with other agencies around town to make sure that they can all share best practices, and of course, responding to emergencies when they occur. Public education, doing their CPR training, probably right here in this room, responding to accidents, and the current favorite are the snake calls, I'm sure. We're seeing more and more snakes popping up right now. So that's what they respond to, although I'm sure Chief Lagreca could point out maybe some factors about snakes and when to call and when not to call, to ensure that we're utilizing the staff as best we can. We have intergovernmental agreements, so we can cooperate and assist one another if something comes up that we need additional assistance from, from all of our surrounding neighbors, which is a great thing to have in line, and certainly to have in line before something's needed, to have those agreements in place. Currently, they're, we always challenge to maintain the levels of service and be responsive to the citizens here. Maintenance, the radios, we've just gotten some new radios in, and that was a benefit through a grant as well. So there's, with our terrain, there were some challenges with radios, so the new radios should help quite a bit. And our contract is coming up due, so that's a challenge to Rural Metro, and it was going to be on our last council agenda, it'll be on our next council agenda, as there's some more tweaking that needed to be done before bringing it to council. But I think Rural Metro seems to have been responsive to staff and our team on the fire contract team in order to answer our needs, including that emergency management, emergency medical response closer to the Eagle Mountain area. That is it there. Chief, did you want to point out anything before I go to the sheriff's office slides? Did you want to highlight anything? Sure, thank you. Chief Scott?
Emergency Operations Center.
Chief, Chief, if I could, I'll get you to do this, and you have to have this online.
We are streaming video, so everybody knows.
Currently, you're sitting in our Emergency Operations Center. In the back room, there's several little compartments inside the carpet that, where there's phone lines, computer lines, where we convert all these computers up here into operational stations for EOC operations. Also, we just received an 800 megahertz radio base station, which is installed in the main frame upstairs. There's an antenna on the roof. The jack is in the back here. So if all else communications fail, we have 800 megahertz radio communications with Maricopa County Emergency Management and the State Homeland Security Agency. So that was quite a coup that Chief Roberts was able to get that gifted to the town for that kind of an operation, so we're pretty happy about that. One other thing that I wanted to mention that I, I'm kind of proud of, even though I am proud of a lot of things with our fire department and our community, but 13 years ago this week, I came here as your Assistant Chief Fire Marshal. Amazingly, I'm still here, so you have a hard time getting me out of here. But the interesting thing about it is, is that 13 years ago, the town probably was maybe half the built-out mass that we are today, and the population was probably somewhere around 15,000 to 18,000. Well, 13 years ago, we had eight people on duty. Today, we have eight people on duty. Through some cooperation with the town council, with the residential sprinkler ordinance, with the preemption ordinances, with our approval of our intergovernmental agreement, we've been able to hold our staff level to that eight-person level, which, if you probably figured it out over the years, probably saved the community probably millions of dollars. So we're pretty thankful about that, even though five to 10 years from now, or sooner, when the economy turns around and we get built out up in the north end, we will have to expand to a third station and potentially put three more people on duty. But it's quite an accomplishment that we've resisted expanding our fire department because we were able to come up with enough cooperation with citizens, governmental agreements, governmental agencies, the council, to get proactive in order to make our job easier. Thank you.
All right, we'll definitely talk some more fire. Thank you, Chief, and emergency medical response. Anything the council wanted to add right now, before we move on to sheriff's office presentation? All right. Wow. I just looked at the slides, I didn't know it was so fancy. All right. So generally, we've got our third quarter report from the sheriff's office, and it's going to reflect back on trending that we've seen, so hopefully it'll be beneficial and informative for you. And of course, we'll have discussion as well on, as we said, we've got our captain here and our lieutenant here, so thank you very much for being here tonight. Here's our staffing for what is considered District Seven, and Captain Kleinitz, District Seven, and also includes which area, just so we know.
We hold northeast quadrant of Maricopa County. Not only the town, but it also includes Rio Verde, Conoverde, and all the unincorporated area, all the way up to the Maricopa County line.
All right, so District Seven's all the northeast quadrant, including Fountain Hills, Rio Verde's, and probably Saguaro Lake, and Goldfield Ranch, those areas. So that's what this is, and that's what this is alluding to, right, Captain?
Yes.
As far as the staffing in District Seven that you're responsible for. Let me go back. So there's what we have here. Of course, we largely interact as citizens with the patrol deputies. We've been real fortunate to have some terrific ones, and we've had many of them stay with us for quite some time, which is very fortunate as well. Get to know our community, get to know our citizens, and to be involved in our community as well. All right, here's some of the details, the calls for service. As you can see from, it's pretty stable. You'll see blips on most of these charts that'll reflect an increase in the first quarter, probably because of our senior population being here, just more bodies in Fountain Hills, visitors as well. Calls for service seem to be pretty comparable to last year, and would probably be what's Perhaps, Captain, you wouldn't mind coming up here to explain the deputy-initiated activity? That was something that wasn't as self-explanatory for me, or lieutenant, either one. Welcome, thanks again for being here.
You bet. Calls for service, we have two separate situations that we deal with. One is a radio dispatch. That means that one of you guys, or somebody in the town, has picked up and asked for a deputy to respond for whatever situation may be occurring. It could be in three categories. Code one is the one that we live for, that means we get to go lights and sirens and go really fast, and, come on, we're kids with cars and guns, give me a break. And we're not as bad as firefighters, but we're, I mean, their stuff is big, you notice that? I mean, it's huge, anyway. And then there's code two, which means that it's not a life-threatening situation, and code three, which generally means it's a static operation or a static situation where the crime has already occurred, or the situation's already occurred, and it doesn't matter if it takes us a little bit longer to get there. So what we have is that we've got the calls for service, and then we have deputy-initiated calls. And that's the stuff where my guys are getting really, really proactive. And these are the things that they see on the street, or in a car, or in a traffic, and makes them want to take action on it. And we end up with some of the most outrageous things on deputy call, deputy-initiated activity. One, that was in the paper, it was a very small blurb, but it was still there. That's not a shot at you, Bob. It normally is, but this time it's not. One of my deputies was driving down Saguaro, he sees three people pushing a car, and thought, you know what, I've got the time, I'm going to turn around, see if I can give them a hand. Pretty nice of him to do that, right? Well, those people thought it was so nice, they started talking to them and started answering the questions about the golf clubs and the DVD player and some of the other miscellaneous items that were in the car. It turns out that he made such friends of them that he was able to talk to them, and they admitted to just committing six burglaries in town. It got to the point of where they got in the car with him, and they drove around and said, yeah, it was that house, and it was that house, and it was, and by that afternoon, we had contacted all of those homeowners and had been able to return all the stolen property. Now, I wish, I wish, all of the situations ended up like that, but they don't. But deputy-initiated activity is when we go by something and our sixth sense kicks in and says, we need to talk to them, we need to find out what's going on, and we get involved based on the laws that regulate us, which is, I won't bore you, reasonable suspicion and then probable cause and all that kind of good stuff.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. You could hold on to that. You probably have, there's probably a lot of things on here you might want to chime in on. Reports taken, look to have followed a typical trend, I would suspect. And then the next item is traffic. So I'm suspecting that we've had an increase in the third quarter, I'm not sure if there's anything other than stepped-up enforcement, maybe some, working on some particularly trouble areas.
Well, what we do with this slide, this is our activity that we initiate in doing on traffic stops. And one of the best ways to show people in a town or in an area that you have an active law enforcement group is to have them actually out there doing their job, patrolling the neighborhoods and making traffic stops. We were very lucky here, just a little while ago, to be able to secure a motor for the district. We are the only district in Maricopa County, which means a standalone group that has their own motor officer. I mean, and that was something that I was able to talk with the sheriff on, the sheriff's completely and totally supported, and we became the anomaly. So I've got a motor up here where the rest of the guys don't, and I protect them. And he's the guy that goes out and really takes an active involvement in the traffic that he sees on the roadway. And there is a direct correlation, as you'll see in the next slide, between traffic citations and traffic accidents. As you see citations going up, or stops going up, you'll see traffic activity go down. When we have other situations in town where we're addressing either criminal damage or we're addressing some of the other problems, and we don't write as many traffic citations, you'll see traffic accidents start to climb. And that whole, that whole situation there is based on the fact that when people see red lights flashing, stop by the roadway, what do you normally do? You slow down. When you slow down, you've got longer reaction periods, and you've got the ability to be able to stop and take evasive action, so you have less traffic accidents.
And that does parallel exactly what you just said there. First quarter and the third quarter, yeah, are way up in citations, and then the accidents are way down in those two quarters, so you're not lying to us.
What? One of the things that, one of the things that is important that I'd like to bring up, and another anomaly that we've been able to do in District Seven, is that we've been able to get a guy through the truck inspector's school. Now, that is a couple of weeks of going to school to be able to take the big rigs, and if we have to, shut them down, so they're not running on the roadways. And Deputy McAtee has just completed that school. We are now in the process of getting him the specialized equipment that he needs, but with all the truck hauling and the complaints that we get for the trucks running on different roadways, we now have a deputy that can actually go to a truck driver and take them all the way through their rig, and if there's enough violations, they shut it down, and they have to leave the truck right there. And then those violations are not violations that are state, they're federal. And when you start talking about federal, you can just start adding zeros to the end of it. You're all aware of that, aren't you? Zeros at the end of it, when you start talking about the feds. So that is something that we will see becoming very, very active through the summer and into next fall.
And Captain, can you explain this? The new cases assigned, I'm assuming is that the last, in this last quarter?
That is correct. And new cases assigned, let me tell you how this works. Anytime that we go out and we feel that we need to document information at a call, we write a departmental report. That is a documentation of the incident that we saw, the interviews that we did, the evidence that we collected. And what happens is that as that is written, it goes to the sergeant, the sergeant reviews it, it goes into the system, and if there is follow-up that needs to be done, there's two options that can happen. Number one, it can be followed up by the deputy, or it is assigned to the detectives. We have three detectives that are assigned full-time to the town, and what you're seeing here is that these are new cases that have been attached to the detectives to follow-up, not the patrol deputies.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next chart you're going to see is how Fountain Hills compares to the uniform crime report, so I guess against the national averages, for lack of a better...
That is correct. National averages is a good way to put it.
Homicides, good, this is good, zero. The uniform criminal reporting is, on a quarterly basis, is .35, so over the last five quarters, we have not had to deal with any homicides, thankfully. Sex crimes, nothing over the last couple of quarters, one and two in the last year, so I guess it's trending well. Any one is significant, of course, so sex crimes, it states there, the data for the national average is based on forcible rape, are our numbers based on anything much different than that?
No, these numbers have to correlate exactly. That's only a way we can make a comparison, apples to apples.
Okay, thank you. Robbery is looking, looking good, obviously. Any robbery is not good, and I recall that day, where that one blip there was a tough day out here. But I believe that person was identified and was dealt with, so, and the folks there at Four Sons are appreciative of that, I'm sure. But we're certainly well under the national average, fortunately, in robbery. And assaults, we're under that as well. Do you want to speak to assaults at all, what that represents, Captain Kleinitz?
Well, the assaults are exactly as you would think they would be. These are, these are physical attacks on another person of the age of 18 and/or older. A lot of times, they can be called, well, we don't call them mutual combat, this is, this is people that are fighting, whether it's through domestic violence, whether it is a fight, whether it is a bar fight, it ends up being underneath the definition of the law, which actually will talk to the point of shoving somebody, I mean, not physically hurting them, but just shoving them, can actually be considered an assault as well.
If you would, the third quarter, does that represent the third quarter of last year?
Oh, eight, oh nine, yes.
Okay, thank you.
This year.
This year. Arson, nothing for a while. I don't recall all four of those arsons a year ago or so, but that's a good, good stat that those are down to about nothing.
And the arsonist, the person that we feel that did those arsons, we identified him, that was a juvenile, and that is generally where we have our problems with arson, is in juveniles. It's things like J. Johns and trash cans and those sort of things that are lit on fire. And in that quarter, we identified the individual, or we think we identified the individual, and they moved to a town in the Midwest.
Could be, seeing that we haven't had any the last couple quarters. All right, burglaries, here's where we are not below the national average, can you...
Yes, we are.
We are.
In the last quarter, we're at 44, the national average is 45.
All right.
By God, in this crowd, you've got to get everything you can get, I mean, come on. This is, if there's any point of concern for the lieutenant and I and the guys in the patrol districts, here's where we are. We're in the world of burglaries and thefts, crimes of opportunity. We'll talk about crimes of opportunity in a moment. One of the things that happens in a beautiful community like Fountain Hills, I mean, is this one of the greatest places in the world to live?
Oh, yeah.
Give me an amen on that. Amen?
Amen.
By the time we get done, it'll be a revival. What happens is that you have complacency set in, and when complacency sets in, it creates an environment for people that are professionals to come in and evaluate and try to take advantage. And we end up seeing and trending that as the economy continues to move down, our burglaries and burglaries across all of the cities tend to be going up, because obviously with people out of work, they're trying to find some other way to add to their income. So burglaries and thefts, crimes of opportunity, start happening. I wish I had the panacea to stop the burglaries and the victimization that happens in town. I don't. Other than to say that I know that our detectives and our deputies, they follow up, they do everything they possibly can, we have block watch. If there is a great item that helps in suppressing the amount of activity in a neighborhood, it is with an active block watch. Because I'll tell you right now, as much as my guys may end up driving around in a neighborhood, they don't know what car belongs there. You know, based on your neighbor, what color car and what make of car belongs in that driveway. And if it's not usual, if it's not the norm, then we ask that you call us, so we can go and we can talk to the people, or we can find out what's going on. Now, a vast majority of the time when we talk to people, we'll go do the knock-around on the doors after a burglary is hap, a burglary is happened, we'll get the comment, you know, I did see a vehicle there. Well, was it a normal vehicle? No. Well, we did see some people that were out there, too. Well, were those people normally in your neighborhood? No. Well, at what point were you going to call us and say, this is unusual? Well, we did, after we saw the broken window, and we looked inside and saw all the stuff was missing. Okay. I guess that works, but it would have been helpful if you called us before all of that happened. happened. And the light bulb kind of goes on, but then they say, "Well, we didn't want to bother you." Well, it's our job. I mean, that's why we're here. This is what we do. This is what we look forward to. You know how much fun we would end up having catching a burglary in progress, a burglar in progress? That's an amen for us. Amen! That'd be a lot, that would be great. That's the stuff that we tend to look for. Block watch is one. The other is, even though you feel relatively safe in your town, in this town, you need to make sure that all your doors and windows are locked, especially when you leave, especially during those beautiful mornings and those evenings, you get up, and you know, "I think I'll leave the house open today," and you leave, and you leave that front window open. For the people that are now driving around our communities, they are looking for indicators that say that people are complacent with their homes, they're complacent with their property. And if they see a window that's half-open in front, how much do you think there's going to be a window that's half-open in back? And how long does it take to get out of a car and jump a fence and pray to God that there isn't a dog in the yard? But how long does it take to find out if there's a dog in the yard? Not long. So you take a few minutes, and you can start identifying houses that could end up being the great ones for being a burglar's prize. And I guess this is kind of a bad way to put it, but you always want to put things up in your home to make them want to go to the next one, go to your neighbor, and if your neighbor does it, then they go to someone else, and they go to someone else, and it goes on through, and it finally gets to, hopefully, providing a safe community.
No, thank you, Captain. Very important, and I'd like you to share, as we wrap up, a little more about block watch, because I know that's been a focus and a goal of your staff, to help empower more residents to get block watch as established, so appreciate you talking a little more about that. Stolen vehicles certainly below national average. I'm sure it's far below other parts of Maricopa County and the state of Arizona is kind of known for vehicle theft.
They are. And if there's one thing that can help us with this number, is that when you get out of the cars, take the keys and lock the door. You would be amazed at how many people... So, was your car locked? No? Okay, the car wasn't locked. Do you have your keys? No, I left them in the car. Okay. And was the car in the garage? No, it was parked on the street. And when we're standing, we're looking out at the street, and you can't even see the street. So they left an unmarked car with keys in the ignition on the street, and then they're wondering why their car was stolen. So if there's anything in there that helps us do that, get out, lock your car, take your keys with you. Take your keys, then lock your car.
All right, thefts seem to be down. Is there a reason for that? Is that because of our fine block watches that have been...
Well, actually, yeah, that's great. I love those numbers. That's really representative of...
Oh, hello. I'm sorry about that. They're nonexistent. There's nothing there at all.
Thefts, crimes of opportunity. This is what I was talking about before. This is going to bashes, or any of the shopping centers, or any of the strips, and running in for two minutes and leaving your purse on the front seat. Windows down, engine running, purse is gone, thank goodness the car isn't gone, but that's usually because the kid isn't old enough to drive. We end up having more iPods, more computers, more laptops, those things stolen, and then the first question is, "Did you lock your car?" No. Well, in any, unfortunately, in any city right now, you have groups that'll go around and actually try the door handles on cars. They'll go through parking lots, and they'll see a nice car, and they'll go through and try the door handle. If it's open, they're inside, and if they do it well enough, are any of you going to know whether or not it's their car? No. So they're getting in, and they're getting out, and they're doing it pretty quickly. Now, one of the things that I personally attest, or I think happens because of our theft drop here, is that I've been making a big deal with that with my guys. When you see people walking around on the streets, and they don't look like they need to belong in that neighborhood, go talk to them, find out what the hell they're doing. I'm sorry, what the heck they're doing. If you see them walking around the parking lots over in any of the grocery stores, go check out, find out what they're doing. You see the kids that are congregating after curfew, and they're riding their skateboards, go talk to them. At Four Sons, you stop, you get a Coke, talk to every kid that's out there. We are talking to so many of the juveniles in this town that, well, let me put it this way, we've made it a high priority to do it, and I'm almost shocked to see the correlation that's up here. I can't say that every theft that's committed here in town is committed by a juvenile. I cannot say that, and I will not say that. But there's a correlation between the activity of my guys in town, and the active or proactive way they're looking at things, and the numbers that we see on our thefts. Now, if I could do that for burglaries, I'd be a really happy camper.
All right, here's something to be very proud of. It's a good tradition of the sheriff's office, particularly here in Fountain Hills, to have an active posse. Saves us a lot of money. Gives more visibility to law enforcement out in the community as well, and they help out with a number of things. What are some of the things that they help out with most?
Well, the posse, I mean, when Sheriff O'Pio decided that he wanted to go out and build his posse as big as he possibly could, you know, there's a large contingent of people out there that say that these are just wannabes, that want to, they want to put on a uniform, they want to be in a car. Well, you know what? That may be really true, but they're not any different than any other volunteer that gets involved. And Fountain Hills being one of the most volunteeristic towns I've ever been involved in, it doesn't surprise me that we would end up having a posse that does the same thing. One of the biggest problems that we're confronted right now is that if we arrest a person here in Fountain Hills, and I wish I had an arrest slide, because it could show you how that's been skyrocketing, because I've got a group of guys in here right now that just really think arresting people is a good thing to do. I mean, bad people, not just arresting just general people. I mean, finding the criminals and going out and actually arresting them. But every time we arrest somebody, we have to book them at Fourth Avenue. Anybody know where the Fourth Avenue jail is? First Avenue and Madison, First Avenue and Jefferson, it's downtown. So to get somebody booked here, get all the way down there and get back, you're looking at anywhere from two to four hours. Instead of taking a deputy off the street for the town of Fountain Hills, we've got a committed group of posse members that will come in and do that transport for us. They do nothing but shuttle the guys back and forth down to the Fourth Avenue jail. Every time we do a block watch program, we've got posse stopping by. Every time we have a midnight madness function, which is a program the sheriff's office does to help integrate law enforcement with middle school and high school, the posse is there. Anytime Parks and Rec needs an extra body or two for some of the functions, that they may be doing it, but it may not be at the level of having a deputy sheriff there, or the price of a deputy sheriff to do it off-duty, the posse will be there to fill it out. Doing traffic control. We end up with a fatal accident or a serious situation, we call out the posse, they'll come out and help and man the barricade. I mean, they are not any different than the volunteers that you see that come into Town Hall, or that are volunteering for the River of Time, or they're volunteering at Kiwanis, or any of the other service groups. They're just solid people that want to give back to their community. Two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine hours this quarter alone. How many work hours, anybody know how many work hours in a year? Two thousand eighty. Two thousand one hundred and nine. That is a full person that is in volunteer time in one quarter alone. And they're driving in their vehicles, I might tell you, eighteen thousand miles that have been driven in and around the town of Fountain Hills. They don't go out anywhere else. It's either Fountain Hills are transporting for us down to Fourth Avenue jail. And you want to talk about a hell of a commitment, I'm sorry, a heck of a commitment by a group of individuals, our Fountain Hills posse is right there.
Volunteeristic, that's our new tagline for the community. We are a volunteeristic community, but, yeah...
You want to challenge me on Scrabble?
No. No, my mother would, but not me, no. But she's getting beat over at the senior center, I'm hearing, and that's good. She needs to be beaten a few times over there at the Scrabble tournament. But thank you, Captain Kleinets. Thank you, Lieutenant Jagazinich.
The reason the mayor didn't introduce Lieutenant Brian earlier, so we're sitting in a little meeting, and he goes, "Hey, is your Lieutenant Soup going to be there?" And I said, "Lieutenant Soup? What are you talking about?" And he goes, "Well, you look at his last name, I can't pronounce it, it just looks like alphabet soup." His last name is Jack Avinich.
Jack Avinich. I don't say it because I can't pronounce it, but...
So he says Lieutenant Soup. Nice, huh?
But he is an awesome lieutenant out here, and he's been doing a terrific job for us, as well as the posse and the deputies and everyone else responsible for keeping us safe out here and taking care of crime. Thank you very much. We'll talk more about that and block watch when we wrap up the next presentation, which is going to briefly go over Parks and Recreation, if I can get it closed. All right, there's a beautiful picture there. If you haven't been to the Veterans Memorial, I'm sure most of you have down there in the bottom right-hand picture, another amazing volunteer organization-built place for you to have some good quiet time, remember a lost one that served, reflect back on time you'd served, and also for some special events that are held there. A tremendous memorial, I'm sure it's one of the better ones around, just a great, a great place to visit, right there at Fountain Park. Of course, there's our fountain. Here's our organization for Parks and Recreation. We've got our director, Mr. Mark Meyer, who's been, we've been fortunate to have for a number of years here. Brian Hughes, many of you know as well, and Don Clark are some supervisors that are responsible for additional employees that do a great job in numerous roles. The slides here will just rotate kind of automatically here, I think, as we go along, and I'll just talk about some of the highlights. Parks and Recreation team's responsible for maintaining over one hundred and fourteen acres of property, Fountain Park of which is a sixty-four acre signature park, twenty-nine acre lake with a hundred million gallons of effluent water in our fountain, and to maintain the grass. Golden Eagle Park, Four Peaks and Desert Vista Parks, as you're likely all familiar, as well as they handle the recreation programs in our community that are published in the loop, programs that are special interest, youth programs, adult programs, teen programs, and senior programs. So across the gamut, you've probably been a part of it at some point. There are also larger response for the special events that occur here in conjunction with organizations often, as far as the funding of those, but they often staff them. Events that have been expanded of late are extravaganza. The Easter time event where you've got, I think we had twelve thousand eggs for the kids to pick up, it took me, the mayor's youth council, volunteers, and Parks and Recreation staff, probably a little over an hour to put down all the eggs in the three fields at Golden Eagle Park. And there's a picture of Hoppy Bunny is his name, or its name. And then, if you haven't taken in the extravaganza, you've got to go, but you've got to be there on time. If you're there thirty seconds late, the eggs are gone. And this year was again, kind of emceed by our state representative and former town council member, John Kavanaugh, and I think this is the first time he did a false start. But he was, we were out in the field one, waiting for some people to get in, parking was tough, as the crowd was bigger than ever, and he was encouraging people to hurry up, "Come on down to the field." And typically, we kick off with the fire department revving their siren to get the actual egg pickup done. And unfortunately, John was encouraging the people to come on, and he says, "Go, go, go, come on, guys." And before he knew it, everybody had gone, and he tried to stop them, but there was no stopping them. And again, thirty, forty-five seconds, twelve thousand eggs are gone. The kids just attack them, and it's just amazing. But what a very positive event, one of the special events that's a cooperative effort sponsored by local business in town, and, you know, supported by our community. The St. Patrick's Day event's grown, the Oktoberfest event's now back, so kind of a new event, which was just a great event as well. Both of those two events, people have come up to me, and they said, "I've met people I've never knew were in Fountain Hills, that were residents here, and there's a lot of people that you might know around your neighborhood, you're seeing people now that you've never met before in these new events, that draw people from all over the community." Pause in the Park, another event that's really kicked off and become a big event there at Fountain Park, and we've got a great deal of visitors, volunteers, including the mayor's youth council, which I'll give a big plug, all the high schoolers at the height are part of the mayor, some of the high schoolers at our high school are part of the mayor's youth council, and help in supporting community events, as well as volunteer to clean streets and other things. The town Parks and Recreation Department's also responsible for maintaining a mile and a mile point two of trails behind the fountain. If you've been up on there, is it called the Overlook Trail? Overlook Trail? I know that's a beautiful trail. And they're also responsible for the public art. Of course, the public art is largely donated to the community by generous folks, I think ninety-some percent of it's been donated to the community, but now, once it's donated, the community, the staff is required to maintain it and take care of it. So they have a great deal of that that they're responsible for. Of course, they're instrumental in improving parks, and we have done many improvements of late, including Desert Vista Park, which was largely, I think half of it, nearly half of it was funded through grants. And then, of course, a few years ago, the skate park there opened up, so some additional things to do. They've been working hard to decrease vandalism, which has been terrific. Recent reports have shown those are trickling to near nothing, which was a concern in the past with escalating vandalism at our parks. And we've got a new parking area now that's, is it open over at the Botanical Garden? Not quite yet. It'll be open soon, the Desert Botanical Garden, which is off of Fountain Hills Boulevard, just down the hill from King's Tree. So some of the other pictures you've seen are some of the newer public art, and I think our Parks and Recreation staff does a great job with, as you saw, pretty limited staff, but a lot of programs. Fortunately, we have a lot of volunteers as well that assist, and funding from a lot of private organizations and individuals in our town that are very generous and add to our volunteeristic nature. All right. I'd like our new council member, Dennis Brown, to give us a few words, a little background on yourself, introduce yourself to the folks that may not have heard you at the night you were appointed.
Thank you, I'm Dennis Brown.
Your turn.
My wife and I moved to town nineteen ninety-six.
Want to make sure it's on? It's on, good. Is it on, Jake?
It is, I want to make sure you can hear you on the internet. Sorry about that.
We moved to town in nineteen ninety-six, and in nineteen ninety-nine, we opened our construction company, which is Echelon Company. We have truly enjoyed living in Fountain Hills. I spent a little over seven years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, four of which I was the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was a true eye-opener and a great experience for me. I hadn't participated in any municipal activities per se in my entire life, so at age fifty, I jumped in and went to work on planning and zoning, and what a treat that's been. We, Judy and I, own the building that is just at the east end of the old, original bowling alley. Might give you something to identify us with. It's a mission-style building we're very proud of, and proud to have it in Fountain Hills. And other than that, I'm simply Dennis Brown, and pleased to be here.
Thank you. Awesome. Council member, Lizzy, anything you want to share before we ask for some questions from the public, or get some dialogue going?
I'm fine, this is about them.
Absolutely, all right. Well, welcome, everybody, so now is the time we can kind of have an informal discussion on about anything. If anything spurred your mind here, feel free, I'm going to get the microphone to you. Bob will come right back to you first, so don't start talking until the microphone gets there. That was the one comment I heard people online, so I couldn't hear.
I just want to be on TV. Thank you. It's, it is on, okay.
For the captain, I have a question. The three or four rapes that were reported last year and this year, cleared, closed, suspended, open, unfounded?
What we have in those, and that's one of the more violent items that we deal with, is on the first possible rape, and on that slide, that... that we deal with, is on the first possible rape, and on that slide, that all, that includes all of the, the definitions that would be for the sexual assaults and all that, but just to make sure that you understand, there was only one case out of there that we ended up, if my memory serves me correctly, not getting a prosecution on because at the very last minute, it was an internet deal and kind of a dating thing, and they decided at that point that they didn't wanna prosecute. Uh, all the other ones absolutely closed with arrests.
Um, for Mark, and it includes Captain also, um, we have video in the parks, correct? For vandalism? Do we have video at Desert Vista Park yet?
Thanks. Sure. Mark Meyer with Parks and Rec. Uh, great question, Bob, thanks. Um, we actually, I wanna, uh, give a thanks, I'm gonna answer your question, but maybe in a little roundabout way. I wanna acknowledge that, uh, if it hadn't been for, uh, John Kleinheinz's help, uh, we would probably still be struggling with the vandalism issue. Um, I, I came to him and talked to him about it, he suggested, talking with some of his folks, uh, he brought them in, um, they not only showed us what equipment to buy, but more importantly, how to use it. So, we started and focused originally on Desert Vista Park because that's where we're having our largest, excuse me, um, Golden Eagle Park, that's where we're having our largest problem. Uh, from there, we went to Four Peaks Park, which was our second busiest park when it came to vandalism, um, and we've added one now. Uh, we haven't put anything yet at Desert Vista 'cause frankly, we haven't had issues really at Desert Vista. It's one of the parks that's probably surprisingly least vandalized at this point. Well, they cost about twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, so, um, it, it kinda depends at this point with the budget situation as tight as it is. If we see a spike or start to have some issues down there, and most of the time, it's relatively minor things, Bob, uh, it can be as, as the, uh, police or fire chief said, it can be lighting a trash can on fire, uh, it can be, uh, breaking glass in a parking lot, those kinda things that don't actually damage property physically. Uh, those are relatively, I'm happy to say relatively infrequent. Um, and we dropped eighty-seven percent, we're down to annual costs that were at one time in excess of ten thousand dollars, annual costs that are a little over a thousand now. So, it's been pretty successful. But, you're right, at some point, if we needed to, we would certainly look at adding that.
Or if someone wants to donate something, or we come up with a grant to pay for it. Do you have a question?
This is for Mr. Mayor and the councilman and the officer also. Is anything gonna be done on Golden Eagle about, uh, the construction traffic and the speed that goes down there? A couple of years ago, I called the police or the sheriff's office about the young man that was being pulled behind a red pickup truck down there at Marathon and Golden Eagle Boulevard, and it's pretty much dismissed. And when I came back two hours later, the, uh, the medical people and the sheriff were there, and he did end up in very, very serious condition, skateboarding. And, uh, I was pretty much dismissed on that, but when I came back through, they had the street closed off. But I see the skateboarding's picked up considerably up there now, and I think a lot of the traffic, construction traffic is confined up there to Eagles Nest right now, and the construction trucks come through there a mile a minute. We could use something, just say, "No, it's not your, Dallowick," but we could probably use something like some speed bumps or something on Golden Eagle, because I see these kids going down there by Marathon. It's a good place to go, when they're coming down from Golden Eagle, they've got a big hill to go down, when they come from hill, from town, they've got another big hill to go down. By the time they get down there to Marathon, they're already moving, and, uh, they're going fast. And I see the kids up there skateboarding again now, pretty heavy, there's a lot of skateboarding throughout town, I know. But we could use some speed bumps or maybe some direction of traffic. I know the trucks are asked to go from, uh, go down, uh, Golden Eagle versus Sunridge Canyon. Why is that, does that have to be that way? And, uh, I got a couple of things, but that's, that's primary, I want to question.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll get Captain to fill in some, some of the blanks here, but, yeah, we, uh, some, I don't know how many years ago it was, we determined that the route would be down Golden Eagle, um, considered the Sunridge route, um, it was determined to be more of a, I can't recall all the reasons, but one of the reasons, if you've driven down Sunridge, it's, it's got some challenges, it's, it's winding, it's much more narrow. Golden Eagle certainly has, uh, much of the relief, you know, the, the steepness, there's no great route through there, so it was determined that it would be Golden Eagle. Um, and there was challenges there with the trucks continuing through Sunridge on occasion, but I think communications have been pretty good with the folks that are working up there now of late, and maybe it's been a little bit slower because, uh, construction activity in general is not as robust as it once was. I can't speak to the skateboarding or the, I remember that accident, that was a boy from Scottsdale, that really got hurt out here, um, but I, I can't speak to those laws specifically or the enforcement, but I do know that Golden Eagles had a lot of enforcement of late, 'cause I've had friends, at least one friend that got a ticket, and others that are saying, "Why are the police so heavy on Golden Eagle?" And, uh, that's one of those areas I would suspect, and Captain will correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we're stepping up enforcement because of complaints, and, and if there are areas that need to have more attention, it's just like you had done, it's, it's important to let us know what you're seeing, uh, be it a burglary or, or traffic problems, to let us know so that maybe there's a remedy or some additional focus that can be done. If, if a law needs to be changed, then you have to consider that also, but they can't be everywhere, that's part of the issue.
I think speak over, you do help everybody. I, that I, you're right, that I can't talk to, 'cause that's not, that's part of it, but, uh, there's, there's a couple of things here that have cropped up that I think are worth addressing. Number one, remember when I was talking about calls for service and we do a prioritization of one, two, and three? We stay a lot with ones and twos, I mean, those are the ones that we need to get to. The skateboard type of a situation is, it would be a priority three call. That is lower, and as, as we pick up everything else, we've got the time, we'll get on over there and check on it. That doesn't help you, that doesn't resolve the issue that you're looking at, but one of the things that can help us resolve that and resolve it very efficiently is if you notice that there is a trend with the times that this is happening. For example, um, the groups that are doing it, that are getting out of school, maybe it is a senior group that gets out at one o'clock in the afternoon or twelve-thirty, and they're up at the top of the hill generally by one, one fifteen. What that does for me, when you call in and say, "Hey, this is what I'm seeing, and it's on Mondays and Thursdays about one o'clock," then we can send it out to those patrol shifts and I can tell them, "Bar calls for service, I need you at this spot." And that has become extremely effective as we've been trying to spot-target those areas that seem to get away from us because we just don't have the bodies to respond fast enough to get to the guys that are zooming down the, the Golden Eagle on their skateboards. Now, the truck traffic and the construction traffic, that's exactly the reason why we sent our guy to the truck inspecting school, is to get up there. Now, as he goes up there and he starts stopping those trucks, how fast do you think that's gonna go through their culture? Holy crips, we better not be going up there unless our trucks are ready to run right because they'll be pulling them over. The same thing with, um, the posse members that are coming out, we're actually getting them to the point of, they can't make the vehicle stops, but if you put a couple of cars on Golden Eagle and they've got their lights on, what's that gonna do to the overall flow of traffic? And again, here is a time-critical situation. Um, you give us a general timeframe of when those things are going, that helps me and the management of my resources to address your issue and your problem. Does that make? Okay, good.
We'll come back with your other question. Who had a comment here? And council, if you wanna chime in, let me know.
Thank you. My house was burglarized and lived on Marathon on Monday, and, um, as far as Marathon, there's a lot of traffic, and they speed. I mean, it's, it's absolutely crazy, like I have a sign that says, "Children at play, you know, slow down." And, uh, it's just incredible how fast they go. I mean, it's, they're going way, I mean, like forty miles an hour through, through Marathon, and there's so much traffic. I don't know where the traffic is coming from because there's no way all these people live on Marathon. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is that one of my neighbors lives on Palo Verde, and during that same week, she had seen a man or guy in a hooded sweatshirt on a small bike, um, going through her neighbor's mailboxes. She called the police. She never received any follow-up. They never came to her door, um, she never saw them come, nothing.
Okay, there's a couple of things. Number one, the people that are gonna be speaking in the neighborhood, ninety percent of the time are your neighbors or neighbors that live within the close proximity. Block Watch is a wonderful tool to get all of these faces together, because as you're sitting in a Block Watch meeting and you're thinking, "Yeah, we're talking about speed," and you go, "Hey, that's you in that red BMW that goes through here at sixty miles an hour." And it's amazing how quickly that one issue has resolved itself. Now, as far as the, the kid in the mailbox, I would have to go research the call to find out exactly what's going on. Um, did she say she wanted to be contacted? Did she say she wanted to help aid in prosecution and aid in identification of this person? Usually when you're asked those questions on the phone with a dispatcher, people tend to say, "No, I don't, I just wanted to let you know, can you send somebody over to check?" So unless you tell us that you want us to come back to you and let you know, nine times out of ten, the deputy isn't gonna go knock on your door because they've got another call waiting to go. But if it's on there and say, "Yes, I want to have that followed up, I want to be contacted," then they will come over. You don't have to aid in the prosecution, but you can tell them, "Yes, I need to have that followed up, have them contact me." They'll either do it by phone, or they'll end up doing, doing it by, uh, coming over and knocking on the door. Okay? Um, please forgive me, I, I feel, I feel bad for the fact that your house was burglarized. There's absolutely, there, that, being, being a victim is, is, is absolutely a terrible situation to be in. Um, but depending upon, I don't know what else was going on in the, in the town that we have with the three guys that we have on patrol that would have been able to respond to a guy that was in the mailboxes at that time. Whether, I, I can't answer that question 'cause I don't know what the guys were doing.
And I understand that, but, and the other thing that I do wanna say is that, at, at one point, you know, in another neighborhood, we did live in Fountain Hills, um, the house next door to us, um, burnt down, and, um, your staff was there banging on our door to make sure that my family got out. So, every experience that I've had with your staff has been very pleasant, and you guys have always taken care of my family, so, um, I just wanted to say thank you, but I also wanted you guys to understand that I am scared and I am frustrated, so it's not personal. I just am in a different place than everyone is.
And I fully understand that, and I did not take this personal, because one of the reasons that I got into this line of work and, and anybody else that's wearing a uniform is because of the empathy that we want to help and we want to be that problem solver, we want to be that knight on the shining armor that comes in and, and saves and protects. That's, that's what drives us to do what we do. It's what drives fire to do what they do. I, I honestly wish that there had been a way, as I talked to your husband yesterday, that we would have that magic crystal ball that would tell us, because there's nothing worse than being victimized by people that are doing it for no other reason than to supply a habit or to get the things that they want to do whatever. Um, I, the only thing I can say on that is that there again is a great and another reason for Block Watch. If you've got more people that are in your neighborhood that are watching the things that are going on in and around your home, the chances are you're gonna see something that doesn't fit. And then having the fortitude to say, "I saw this and this is what it was." If I could, I wish I could, I wish I could change that, I really, really do, and thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. Uh, Wes, I just wanna add to your challenge.
We were burglarized when we were in Ohio, not here, and it's an awful feeling. My wife and I have gone through it. First thing we did was get an alarm system immediately after that happened, and when we moved here and built our house, we put an alarm system in. It's one thing that will really, really stop, in most cases, burglaries of your homes. So, the sheriff and the rest of his staff are doing the best they can, but they're spread thin, I mean, they can't be everywhere at once, so I would recommend to most of you around here, get a burglary system.
Thank you. Thank you. Am I speaking with victims? I've only had my car broken into and I know how bad that made me feel violated. I couldn't imagine having somebody in my house going through things and taking things that you can't replace, so, bad feeling, but, um, you know, what can we do about it? Uh, that's all we can do, so.
My name is Margie Martin, and we have a very active Block Watch. We have sixty-seven homes and we know all our neighbors, and you know, that's even exciting to get to know all these people. But I wanted to ask John something. A week ago Sunday, there was an article in the Arizona Republic about a robbery, a burglary in Fountain Hills, forty thousand dollars' worth of gold jewelry was taken, and, uh, unfortunately, they had no insurance, but it said also that the doors were not jimmyed, the windows were all fine. How did they get in? How did they?
I've always been watching you since I got here. Um, I, actually, I don't know exactly how they got in on that one, and thank you for bringing it up, because I remember reading that article and thinking, forty thousand dollars? I didn't get a phone call on that, did you get a phone call on that? So we've got sergeants that we need to go talk to, because that type of information usually comes up to our level and said, "Hey, this is something that has happened." Um, nine times out of ten, when you have a burglary and there are specific items like heirloom jewelry and diamonds, and those are the only things that are taken, somebody knows and somebody understands how your household works. And it is sad to think that people that have been possibly involved in your house have either talked or have given that information out to someone else that gives them the understanding of how you work in your household. For example, um, for me, I'm in the business and I leave my bedroom window upstairs open, and I, I know for a fact that, that when it's not air conditioning time, that I will leave and go to work and I'll leave that window open. I go home and I think, huh, that's pretty stupid, and I'll close it, and I'll invariably forget about it and I'll leave it open. And it doesn't take long for patterns and routines to come out as far as what we do. We are people of habit, we are habitual. Can I get an amen to that? Huh? We are! And the more of a pattern that we put together on a daily basis, the easier it is to identify the weaknesses in that pattern, to take advantage of you and the things that you own. So when you mentioned having an alarm service, absolutely the best thing that I can think of, and our number one call for service in this town is false alarms. So you imagine how that drives my guys nuts, and I had somebody come up to me and say, "Well, if your number one call for service is false alarms, then you're not gonna go to them." No, you don't understand, we have to go to them. We get dispatched, we have to go. I've got guys that don't go to a call that they're dispatched to, I will do all the paperwork necessary to have them fired and fired as soon as possible, because that's a public trust issue. If the alarm at your home goes off, we had better be there. And you know who usually beats us there? Is our Fountain Hills posse, because they're already driving around doing welfare checks and, and home checks. You know that that's available when you take a vacation? Vacation watch?
Tell our kids.
There you go. And we'll send a posse member out, they send a posse member out, that'll be two or three times a day just to rattle the doors and windows. Now you tell me, oh, I'm sorry, that, that's the way that we talk about checking, you know? I didn't mean that, okay, never mind. Um, but imagine if there was somebody that was, was, was canvassing the neighborhood and they saw a patrol car, not knowing the difference between a deputy and a possuman. I thought you were gonna say, "You look like a possuman, John." Yeah, okay, whatever. Um, but seeing them get out and then check a house and have them on the street maybe an hour later, and here comes another posse car, does the same thing, you think they're gonna be going after that house? No. No, not at all. They're gonna go after the neighbor's house, maybe a block or two over, so that's why those things are so important.
Alarm system. As soon as we got our alarm system, we start sleeping better. Other than that, when we, after the-
Speaking of the service you offer to provide house checks... Speaking of the service, who would we contact? Rita at your office for that? Okay, thank you. Rita, if you don't know, Rita is the lady that we brought on board to help with our community action programs. And she is the one that coordinates block watch. She's the one that'll coordinate if you have a child at a school and you need a drug presentation at the school. She's the one that you can call that'll help do that. She kinda takes care of all of those things in one big lump. And that number is here at Town Hall. You can walk in and say, "Hey, let me fill it out." We get the vacation watch, we send it over to the posse, they make a list. They can't... The way they do it is that they have a list of homes that are on vacation watch and they're not allowed to go play with us, which means roll in and help us with burglar calls or see us on a traffic stop and stop. And, you know, they're the lucky loose too, like, wow, what's going on here? Wow, is that really dope? Wow, you know? And they get... But before they can do any of that, they have to make their rounds to their homes. And they've got people out... This kills me. They've got people out checking to make sure that houses get checked. These are volunteers! And then to bring up just one other one, to show you how effective it can be, Rio Verde and Tonal Verde. Rio Verde and Tonal Verde, couple hundred homes in both of those developments out there. Every single home in each one of those developments is covered under block watch. And each and every one of them is divided up with a block watch captain. And they have a rule that says that when you have a new family move in, within ten days, the block watch captain will contact the new family. They will give them all the necessary phone numbers and they will brief them on who belongs in the neighborhood. Voila.
(inaudible). Yes?
Hello. I live in the same community as Jessica, the Golden Eagle Marathon, Green Valley area. And I just wanted to kind of ask along the same lines with the same questions in regards to safety. Over the past three to four weeks, there have been increasing vandalism and ultimately a break-in in the house. Are there any additional deterrents that we can do? You had mentioned the block watch. Well, we do have a block watch and we've been organizing and sending emails and, you know, really keeping an eye out and making the phone calls. And ultimately, you know, I moved to Fountain Hills a little over four years ago with my family. I have two young sons. And just wanted to check and see what type of additional deterrents as well as what type of assurances can you give us?
Well, the assurance that I can give you is that I will make sure that my shift, the guys that are working on the street, are aware of the concerns. Because this is about the fourth or fifth time we've heard the same geographical area. So that means that there's something that's going on that maybe we're not with our finger on. And again, I could go talk to one of my sergeants and he could say, "Yeah, absolutely. We're already spending a lot of time there and we're picking up these guys and we're doing this and we're doing that." I always get in trouble for this next comment. I will absolutely, and I'll get in trouble again tonight. One of the biggest deterrents is light in the evening for vandalism. There are no streetlights in this town. Think about somebody that is gonna be vandalizing near a home. And how quickly can you disappear into the desert? Just put on dark clothing and take five steps off the roadway and squat down. Headlights on a car is not gonna pick you up. So what does that leave you? Porch lights. How many of your neighbors actually leave their porch lights on?
(inaudible).
Very minimal. Very minimal.
Isn't that some kind of review of the common statement of, you know, light?
You're asking me my opinion to keep your house safe? I don't give a damn whether or not the town wants to have dark skies. You're asking me, "What can we do to prevent it?" I'm telling you to put up streetlights. I thought I'd stand over here now. Because that's usually when I get swung at. But the point is, is that they are at times just commonsense solutions. And commonsense means looking at your home and saying, "What is it that I can do in my house that is gonna afford me the best protection? What can I do to fortify my home, my house?" We talked about an alarm system, having the ability to have an alarm. Do we have our lights outside on auto timers so there is at least some light in my front yard? Do I have those lights on the driveway? Do my neighbors on both sides know when I come and go and what cars are supposed to be here? What cars aren't? In fact, just out north on Dynamite, we ended up catching people that were taking all the appliances out of a house and they were in construction vehicles. Ninety-nine percent of the people going by would say, "Well, that's just normal." Well, yeah. Until my deputy stopped by and said, "Hey, guys, what's going on?" And you could just see him break out in sweat. For us, that's a clue. There's something going wrong here. Interviewed him, found out that they were stealing the appliances out of a foreclosed home. And then we had a neighbor come over and said, "You know, I thought there was something suspicious about that." Okay, thank you. But those are the things that I would recommend, is the light. Making sure that if you know, call us. Let us know. We may not get out there right away and you may not see us. But I'm gonna guarantee you that when we get a call for service, we go as soon as we are able to get there. And that could be in that fleeting minute that you're in the back room putting clothes away or making dinner or putting a garage door down where two cars go right on past your house looking for whomever it is that we're looking for in that neighborhood. But again, do not be afraid to give us a call if you see something that is out of the ordinary in your neighborhood. We like that. We like being able to go talk to people. Then it becomes a game, especially when you end up with a real bad guy. And most recently... Sorry, I know I'm taking a lot of time, but this is kind of cool. On another traffic stop, we get a call for service. The lady is screaming about the fact that her son was gonna be... This all has to do with drugs. These guys are there, they were looking to kill her son and, oh my God, they want the money out of me. And what all this happened was, is one of those deals where this group came from out of town, in town, to try to get money. She calls us. Our guys go. They see a car driving away. One of our guys peels off and stops that vehicle, starts talking to the guys inside. The two guys that we took off in there, I swear to God, had been out of DOC. That is the Department of Corrections. Now, we're talking about real bad guys here that had a criminal history that was as long as my arm. We're talking about the guys that have the prison tats, the swastikas and the tats that you see on National Geographics, you know, the specials, the gang wars. We're talking about those types of individuals, the white supremacists. And you know the comment that was made? "I can't believe I got arrested here." Okay? You talk to my guys and it's, "Hell, yeah, you got arrested here. Come on back and we'll do it again." But that's where it starts. And if it starts with the attitude that my guys are willing to do what it takes to protect the town and you start saying, "I'm willing to do what I can to help to protect my neighbor" and call and say, "This doesn't look right," and lock my house and turn on my lights and do those things, then we do make a difference. We do make an impact. But it takes all of us working together to do so.
How about we negotiate and do motion detector lights? When we had our block watch meeting, it was either the deputy that was out there was Rita that brought up motion detector lights as being a key, obviously, because a lot of people do value the dark skies here. And we appreciate if you turn the lights off of yours. No, I'm just kidding. Did timers? Yep, timers? But the motion detectors too? They work well. Obviously, if somebody's moving around, the lights get turned on. But I'm sure lights are big. It helps to make people feel uncomfortable if they're where they shouldn't be. But I think you can run your lights. What do you call those? The sirens, the noise? What's the...
The red and blue.
The red and blue lights. There's no special emergency lights. All right. How about some more? You guys can speak. This Town Hall is totally casual. Anything that's on your mind? Last time we talked about some handicap parking and I think we made some good headway there. Yes, sir?
I don't wanna take up time for anybody else. Just three real quick things. One thing is, I don't know if the town has any control over this Fountain Hills water district, but the ISOA crane that sticks up over there, haven't seen it in the sanitation, sticking up over there, it's an ISOA. Hadn't moved in I don't know how many months. I wished I owned it. I could make some money with it. But number two, I know that before, a long time ago, when the town got in financial trouble, we disbanded the marshal department. Haven't noticed a bit of difference since they've been gone. And now we... Times got a little bit better. Now we have the code enforcement, I see, going around all the time with the white cars, the new cars and quite a few of them. That's gotta be a pretty good experience. I just wonder if it's justified. And number three, is Fountain Hills Boulevard ever gonna be completed? This beautiful main thoroughfare inbound with the grass, the palm trees, and you drive three blocks up here, it turns into an ISOA. Is there any plans that... I don't know what... Hell, there's gotta be one that main interests to the town. Is anything or will anything ever be done to Fountain Hills Boulevard? Thank you very much.
Good. You're right, the sanitary district, maybe somebody will have some answer to that here in the audience or council, I'm not sure. But we can talk sanitary district. I know they have a major, probably one of their bigger capital improvement projects going on there. So I would imagine that's associated with it. It's been inactive as far as you know? Hasn't moved, so we can inquire into that. You're right, it is a separate governmental entity. The Fountain Hills Boulevard's been getting a lot more conversation of late and it is part of the development agreement with Elman, has some improvements along Fountain Hills Boulevard as well. That'd be the new two-square-mile development in the north part of town, which would have Fountain Hills Boulevard extend right through it. But that is... That does need to be completed. Obviously, the capital improvement projects have been cut way back and have to be managed very diligently. And we're also seeking stimulus funds. You know, the stimulus is out the door, the deal's been signed, there's money out there and we're trying to get what we can. I'm not sure if that'll be part of that stimulus package because most of those programs also have to have been planned out years in advance or on a plan. And I don't think we have Tom here, but maybe Julie would know about the planning that's needed in order to get things qualified for stimulus funding or additional funding that we don't have planned or available. As far as the... Remind me of the other item. Code enforcement. We have less code enforcement these days and I think we've moved a person out of there, that department, because of... Town has had to make some cuts. An area where code enforcement works quite a bit, I think, has been largely in a lot of new construction and that's obviously been reduced as well. But code enforcement, I think the people of Fountain Hills have valued code enforcement and that's why we still have code enforcement is because of the... There are town codes and there are violations. And people wanna make sure that Fountain Hills is a special place to live, but there have been reductions in that area. And if... And they also do numerous other things. I don't know all the things that they do. Maybe our town manager could expand on code enforcement and maybe that'd be a good thing for you to speak on if you wouldn't mind, Rick. Was there another item? I'll ask Rick to... Mr. Davis, well, that's your father, right? Rick, town manager, would you talk about code enforcement and the role and where you see that going, if you see that changing at all?
Sure. Code enforcement is traditionally performed in communities. There are some communities that simply don't have active code enforcement. They just simply utilize their city prosecutor office in order to seek and obtain compliance from people who are violating code. We're a town that we actually have code enforcement officers and their role is actually first and foremost to respond to complaints. And then number two, to help mitigate, facilitate the mitigation of any circumstances which pose a threat to public health, safety and welfare. They will also deal with nuisances. And a nuisance is statutorily defined as anything which disturbs two or more residences' health, safety, comfort and repose. I didn't even know what repose meant until I got into this profession. Apparently, it's just kind of bothers you. And so we have a nuisance ordinance. So code enforcement is a pretty active function of the town of Fountain Hills. It is not one where the... Except for obvious violations, i.e. some signage issues, where the code enforcement officers just drive around looking for code violations. They're kept really busy with complaints. To give you an idea, there is a mitigation or an arbitration type of service called Solve It that the town subscribes to. And this is a mediation service that you could take advantage of or your neighbor, if you have a problem with your neighbor, you go before an individual and it's mediated through a third-party individual. You pay for this service, but it's a lot better than suing each other. And so it's kind of worked out for the town. The town of Fountain Hills actually utilizes that service more often, I'm told, than communities many times bigger than we are. And a lot of our complaints, and you're gonna laugh at this, we believe the majority of our complaints are barking dog issues. And that has become a significant problem in the town of Fountain Hills, barking dogs. Now, at the same time, we just got through talking about crime and deterring crimes, so there's a balancing act here. How many dogs are we willing to put up with just to feel a little bit more secure out there? Because they do, you know, they're territorial and of course, and if they send somebody on their property, they're gonna start barking. And that's all fine. We love our animals and our dogs. Here in Fountain Hills, we've got a tradition of loving, we even have a dog park. But it has become a real problem for us. And it's one that I know the sheriff's department responds to. And Captain Kleinheinz has requested that some type of paper notice be left on every dog complaint, whether that's a citation or it's a warning or what have you. Because we're trying to educate people with regard to what a problem this is in our community. But for the most part, code enforcement's going to remain, for now, one that is complaint-driven or it's driven by a concern for health, safety and welfare. Now, one of the other big problems that we have in the community right now are green pools. Now, that is a significant health hazard. So they've been working quite a bit on that issue. As homes are foreclosed on, we have a lot of pools. There's nobody left behind to take care of those pools. And that has become a significant problem.
Let the bank take care of them.
What was that?
Let the banks take care of them.
You know, that's a good point. Let the banks... You said, "Let the banks take care of the pools." I bought such a home that had been left for about a year before I purchased it and the bank had arranged for a pool service. I don't think we would've bought that home if we went in there and saw a carcass in the pool, okay? No matter how big it is or how small, I think we would've just walked right outside the gate and left. So yes, good point. I hope they will do that. But I'm afraid not a lot of them do.
Yes?
I have a question for Parks and Recreation, Mr. Shalom. I think this is probably a question for a better economy than what we're currently faced with. But I don't know if there's any stimulus funds for Parks and Recreation. And my question is, has anyone thought about the possibility of constructing another toilet facility at Fountain Park on the north?
(inaudible).
Constructing another toilet facility on the northeast, I would say, corner of, so to speak, of the Fountain Park. I noticed that whenever you have a special event, that seems to be where they put the portage on. Just something I thought. I walk around the fountain a lot. I can walk to the existing toilets, they're fine, but something to think about.
No, I think that's been brought up by numbers of people. I'm sure it's not inexpensive, but that certainly makes sense to have another facility over at that area. Mark, do you wanna talk about how we've addressed that in the past or where we're going?
I wish I had good news as far as stimulus. The federal government, when they put the stimulus funds together, they really concentrated on two things. One is to have projects that were what they called shovel-ready, which means you have had to gone through all the design work and basically have your construction documents ready to go. We didn't have any projects that were that far along. They also tended to categorize them in certain areas. I'm speculating, but I suspect the thinking...
Um, I wish I had good news as far as stimulus. Uh, the federal government, when they put the stimulus funds together, they really concentrated on two things. One is to have projects that were what they called shovel-ready, which means you have had to gone through all the design work and basically have your construction documents ready to go. Well, we didn't have any projects that were that far along. Um, they also tended to categorize them in certain areas. I, I'm speculating, but I suspect the, the thinking was, let's try to put as many dollars out there as quickly as they can. So, they're focused on issues like transportation, and let's put a lot of money towards roads. That puts a lot of people to work, generates a lot of, uh, spin-off benefits for construction companies and labor and materials and that. Um, we, we don't have projects typically that are, that are that way, and if we do have a construction project, doesn't tend to last particularly long. We get in, we get out, if it's a park improvement, something like that. Whereas, the project you see across the metro here, the major transportation issues can last, as you well know, for years, if not many years sometimes, so. Um, but in your reference to the Fountain Park and that, uh, you're right, we have had a number of requests, uh, and we have one remaining phase to do in Fountain Park. One of the things, uh, we've contemplated asking the architect before we do this final phase is to take a look at, if we were to construct a restroom facility, where should it be located? And, and you mentioned one of the areas that we're looking at too, in that northeast corner, which is really kinda driven by the amphitheater and all the activity takes place there. Um, and also, um, what that cost might be.
Thank you, Mark. There's been some success in stimulus in other areas, for example, in transportation, that was a big focus. The guidelines came out early for those. And through the mayor coop association of governments, we have a, a little over a million dollars that was awarded to us, that you may have read about, uh, for Shea project, for roads. But, yes, thank you.
My question was, or is, why is a sidewalk needed on Shea with stimulus money? I believe that was in the paper last week. Seems like Shea's not really the place for a sidewalk, since nobody's gonna walk up that hill.
Well, funny you mention that. There's a couple of emails I've gotten recently asking, when is the, with the Shea improvements, we better be doing a darn sidewalk to connect us to Scottsdale. So, um, what you might not think is needed is desired by many others. Um, but, uh, I'm not sure I'll be walking it, but I do know people that do walk quite a bit, and there, I, we actually have a friend, my mom has a close friend, that'll walk, uh, boy, ma, probably ten miles, uh, on occasion, and, and would use that, uh, pathway. But pedestrian safety and having connectivity and, and even, and as far as tourism and leveraging some of the beauty that we have here, part of it is having sidewalks and trails. When you have views such as we have, you probably wanna have a place that people can traverse and utilize for walking or biking. And that Shea area, although it may have heavier traffic on the roads, is certainly a beautiful spot. And if people from Eagle Mountain wanna get down to the Target Center and walk, or other ways, there's, there's lots of gaps in our community, and we've heard of sidewalks to, to nowhere. That's because there's still a lot of development yet to occur in Fountain Hills, and not a lot of connectivity. And the fact that some of the development occurred back when it was under the county, and the requirements may not have required folks to can put a sidewalk in at times. But, um, I guess that'd be your opinion at this point, that, that that area may not need it. You may have a good number of folks that agree with you, but there are folks that do see value in that. And, uh, I'm not sure exactly what's included in, in the current stimulus or what's desired, um, as far as what phase that sidewalk would be a part of the investment. Do you know when the sidewalk is, Rick, offhand, or Julie, when that sidewalk piece is, or council, offhand? I can't tell you when that part's planned offhand, I know, but I did see an email recently, if you wanna get me your info. And in fact, I'll have my cards out on the table for anybody that wants to correspond via phone or email or follow-up later with a question that they forgot to ask. But, um, if you wanna leave me your name or number, or shoot me a note, I'll get you the answer to Shea or keep you up to date on there.
Just a quick answer. Uh, one thing that you might wanna be aware of is that the town has applied for federal highway money, that's apart from the stimulus money, uh, that would address the improvements on Shea and Fountain Hills Boulevard, in the amount of about twenty million dollars, is what we've applied for. Uh, there is also a possibility of acquiring what are called CMAC funds, which help with the construction of bicycle paths and sidewalks and things like that. And the scheduling of those projects, while although they are in our capital improvement plan, and we'll usually schedule them out there, uh, really, our ability to realize those capital projects are dependent upon our success in acquiring some of these, these funds. And that's what these funds are intended for from the get-go, is to construct these types of facilities. So, uh, just keep tuned up. We don't know when we'll be able to do it either, uh, but we'll do it just as soon as those funds are available.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, Bob.
Mark, I have another question for you. Um, I seem to remember last year, or the year before, or maybe, I don't think it's this budget, but there was something about park rangers for the parks. Is that in the circular file, or is it something we're gonna be doing, or what?
Uh, Bob, unfortunately, the, uh, park ranger positions became a casualty of the budget cuts. Um, we also looked at the fact that, uh, each department, I think, went through some cuts, obviously. And we took a look at ours, and frankly, we were basing that largely on the amount of park vandalism and how much it had gone down over the last several years. Um, we also left open the option that if that situation were to change, we might be seeking that position again. Um, we're also looking, though, at ways that we can perhaps utilize volunteers to meet and greet folks, uh, out in our parks and be kinda spokespersons, help them understand the park roles. It's kinda a meet and greet in a sense, not unlike what a park ranger would do, because if they see somebody who's violating a rule, a lot of times, they may not be aware of the rule. So, a lot of times, somebody simply going up there and intervening and explaining the rules to them, uh, can help that and solve that particular situation. So, we're, we're not totally abandoning the idea, we're just gonna take a different tack to it.
Voluntaristic. Voluntaristic. We had a volunteer, uh, recognition event, um, that Heather Ware put together, was just outstanding. Hundreds of volunteers, many of you here in the room are there. Um, and we were actually able to give some substantial presidential service awards away to volunteers in our community that have done a tremendous amount. So, uh, there are lots of talents, there are lots of people with big hearts out there to step up, and we do have a volunteer coordinator that's on staff just to help manage that, because there is such a volume of volunteers. And, uh, encourage you, keep yourselves plugged into that wherever you desire to share your talents.
Speaking to public safety again, uh, what's the ability of gaining additional funding from the stimulus or other sources to increase law enforcement presence? I mean, it's pretty alarming when, uh, Captain John was talking about the numbers of officers he has on the street at a time of only three. Uh, is there any possibilities of getting some stimulus dollars for additional, uh, police resources?
Well, the, uh, the agency that manages our, our law enforcement, um, I know we have been made aware of some funding that we're considering, uh, as far as how it would work with the sheriff's office and, and what they're, might be able to leverage on our behalf. I'll see if he's got any comments on that. But much, much of the stimulus funds, probably the majority of it at this point, still hasn't even gotten guidelines out on it to be even aware of what might be coming. Um, likely due to the AIG issue, I think they're taking a, a little tighter look at the guidelines that they're setting, uh, before they release funds. But, uh, I'll ask Captain Kleinheinz, and I know our town manager, Rick, wants to comment.
There's actually two items that come to mind when, when you ask about that. And the first one is, we regulate the number of people that we put on the street based on our response time for the call for service for the priority one call. The industry standard is five minutes from the time the officer receives the call to he is on, or she is on scene. Our average in Fountain Hills is under five minutes. We're about four-thirty, four-thirty-five. So, then that says, we've got a lot of people that say, well, wait a minute, you know, we would still like to see more presence on the street. Well, then that comes back to the town that says, what are you willing to pay for the quality of life that you want to see in the town of Fountain Hills? And as you look at some of the other communities that are surrounding us, and use them as a litmus test, for example, over in Paradise Valley, we are sitting about one per thousand, just under. You look at Paradise Valley, they're about two-point-five per thousand, but they pay for that extra one-point-five deputies or police officers per thousand people. So, that truly comes down to, once you meet the industry standard, that comes down to what is the town, what are the residents of the town willing to pay to have that added sense of security?
With regard to your stimulus funding question, uh, we were actually approached by, by the sheriff's office and asked whether we'd like to participate in applying for some cops grants. Now, cops grants are, are interesting grants, because obviously, you're talking about hiring deputies, and that means that they, these grants expire after a few years, and you're also responsible for the startup costs associated with the equipment, the car, et cetera, uh, that would be driven by, used by these, uh, new deputies or officers. And so, we were being asked to, uh, make a commitment that would've amounted to, um, several thousand dollars, if not a couple of hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, without any kind of, uh, understanding right now whether we would have money in the next couple of years to continue, uh, that. But, as I poked into that, I was also told by the sheriff's office, well, these grants are actually specifically intended to, uh, offset what the federal government feared, what the administration feared would be mass layoffs of law enforcement officers. So, they felt like, instead of cities, especially in urban areas, instead of there laying off these officers, if some of the stimulus money could be provided to these jurisdictions, then maybe the cities wouldn't lay off the officers until the economy recovered and the cities were back on their feet. Now, it was kinda the, what was explained to me by the sheriff's office, uh, what the original intention of that grant was.
Thank you. Yeah, this side of the room's a little shy on questions. You gotta keep up with the other side.
Thanks, Jay. We've, uh, let Dennis and Henry off the hook for the last hour, so. Um, congratulations, Dennis. Um, it was a good group of volunteers and all qualified people. I'm glad they selected you. Um, my question is, I've been here for thirty years, and I have a general contractor like you are. I enjoy the letters to the editor and the articles in The Times, about the fire station coming up. They missed the city hall by about a hundred percent, and we missed the mountain preserve by about a hundred percent. And now we have these great letters of the one million, three million, and five million dollar fire station, with the million dollar sewer line and the half million dollars worth of road improvements. With your, uh, experience in construction, could you bring some, uh, insight as to how we can get a handle to what that's gonna be before we spend any more money on it?
Thank you. I'm not sure if Dennis is fully up to speed on the fire station yet, but have at it.
Great question. Great question. Now, I am not up to speed on it. Uh, I have not seen the drawings. I will apologize. I've been a little busy, uh, around town hall the last day or two, but I will, in fact, uh, become extremely familiar with it, and I will answer your question. Thank you.
Councilmember Legay.
Thanks for, thanks for reminding us, Ken, that we're, we're off the hook, but as I was sitting here this evening, I'm never shy to talk and, uh, shy to say a lot. However, it's kinda neat just to sit here and, and listen, listen to you all and, and hear what, what your concerns are firsthand, and, and, and thank you for being here. Um, with respect to the, the fire station, it, it certainly is, uh, something we're continuing to debate. And, uh, with respect to cost, um, I like to refer to Chief LeBrecque, who has, uh, looked into it, Ken, and, and studied it, um, and have some rough, rough estimates, if we were to break ground today. Now, obviously, those numbers would change in time. So, Jay, I, I think we should put Scott up there to, to address, uh, the, the cost, so far, and so on.
Thank you. Regardless of the cost, we're looking to have that funded through a stimulus. And that's, that's what's on the radar. If I remember, as those guidelines aren't quite out yet, there, we're expecting, maybe they would be similar to what's out there today, which is a ninety percent funding grant. But, do you have more information?
Uh, in regards to cost, uh, over the past year and a half or so, as we got close to this project, what we did is we did our due diligence with communities that surround us, primarily City of Scottsdale, Gilbert, and Surprise, and asked them what their experience was, what their cost per square foot was, and we pretty much took an average of what that square foot cost was, and that's where we came up with the one-point-five million dollars for a building that's approximately five thousand square foot, give or take a couple of hundred feet. Uh, again, uh, what the square foot cost to build something a year and a half, two years ago, is certainly different than what it is today. Uh, our architectural firm that we hired, Hunt Callaway, have told us that in some of their projects that they are working on now, some of the construction bids have come back in thirty to forty percent less than what they originally quoted at that. So, at this point, we think we know, but probably within a couple of months, Hunt Callaway will come back in and tell us exactly what they think this fire station is gonna cost to build, and we will share that with the public. Uh, in fact, I believe it's Tuesday night, uh, six o'clock or so, Hunt Callaway is gonna be putting a presentation on here to show the community exactly where we're at in the process, and we will continue to do that as we go through the design process. We will share that information and receive input from the community. We've also had several personal one-on-one, uh, meetings with the stakeholders, Westridge Village folks. One day, we invited all the HOAs that surround the location to come and meet with us and the, uh, and the, uh, architect. So, we're at that point there, where, uh, we're involved in probably within, probably a month, we're probably gonna give you a pretty hard number. That, you know, it won't be any assumptions on me or anybody else's part of what that number truly is. Uh, and what the mayor has said is that we are hopeful and we are waiting to compete for federal dollars to bogus fire station. Uh, the government has issued two-hundred-and-ten million dollars to FEMA to build or remodel non-federal fire stations. And so, we are in the process to position ourselves to be able to compete for those dollars. And the mayor did mention there may be a ten percent match, but now we're hearing there may not even be a ten percent match, it may be a hundred percent, uh, funding on that. So, that's why we're, we're anxious to get our, our plans in place, so when it comes time, we think in July, give or take a month, to start the competitive bidding process, 'cause it's gonna be a competitive bid. It's not gonna be each state and each city gets so many dollars, uh, that we will be ready to compete. And it's gonna be handled through the Department of Homeland Security, which we've been pretty successful over the past three or four years in, uh, receiving grant monies, uh, to buy equipment for the fire department, mainly radios, air compressor, self-contained breathing apparatus. So, we're pretty comfortable with the process that we feel that we're gonna be exposed to here shortly. Uh, so, we are ready. Uh, you know, we thank the council and the citizens for having enough, uh, enough respect for us to go ahead and budget a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to start this architectural process, uh, 'cause we, we did get a pretty good price on that. Normally, from what we were told, that, that comes in about, I think, ten dollars a square foot or more, and ours came in just a little bit under seven dollars a square foot for to hire this architectural firm. So, already, we saved quite a bit of money. But, uh, it's my promise to the citizens here that we will keep you posted as we move forward, and any concrete numbers that we get, we will definitely share immediately with, with the public.
Thank you, Chief. And as we begin to run out of time, I wanna personally thank the, uh, our fire department, our emergency respondents in both fire and police, and thank our sheriff's department for, um, all the great work that they do to keep us safe and, and, uh, put themselves at risk to protect, um, the citizens here in Fountain Hills. I wanna thank you for the quality job you guys have done for years here, and, and we encourage you to keep it up, and, and, uh, we're just very grateful for your service. Particularly the deputies out here every day, working hard, and the folks responding to calls, uh, hour by hour here in Fountain Hills, for whatever the needs might be. We're, we're relying on you, and we come to expect great things, and you continue to serve us very well, so we thank you very, very much. Now, please pass along our thanks. And that's great news on the, uh, potential stimulus funding of being perhaps a hundred percent, uh, because as we do- not have a great deal of money in our capital improvement plan, particularly with the downturn in the construction, which largely funded our capital improvement budget. So, all the stimulus we can get our hands on in regards to real needs is something important. As we're finding many, much of the stimulus dollars, the guidelines, we don't qualify for. Surprise, surprise. We're either too big, or we're too small, or we don't have the programs in place that need that, that the stimulus program wants to fund, be it redevelopment, or, you know, areas that are blighted and things like that. So, we've got a great team of volunteers, some of you are here in the room, that are working on our stimulus plan, because we don't have the lobbyists that the big towns have to address it on a daily basis, but our volunteers are doing the best they can to identify these stimulus funds when they become available and the staff in going after them. So, we've been successful a little bit thus far. I think most communities are disappointed because of the hype when stimulus came out and funding a lot of programs, they're finding, just an example down at MAG that we had, 100, I think, 10 times the amount of funding needs that were applied for that were actually funded, and that's about all they're going to get. So, there are some disappointed folks that thought their stimulus meant something more than it is. Hopefully, they'll actually do some stimulate in the economy, but as far as us being able to rely on it, we're not real confident we're going to get a huge amount of money. We're doing our best to get our fair share and utilize that money in a way that's respectful of the taxpayers, so that we are spending money on projects that we'd see value in and that we feel are needed. Want to again thank you, thank the staff for staying late here tonight, we've had many meetings this week and the end of last week, staying late. Most appreciate your input and your continued hard work for our community to do the best that we can on limited resources, and your staffs for serving our people well. And mainly want to thank the folks that came here as the Town Hall is all about the citizens, and it's a great credit to you that you care enough for your community to come and voice concerns or ideas, or just be here to be supportive, to be involved, and be aware. So, that's what makes Fountain Hills so great, is that we have a great deal of caring people here that want to make their town a better place to live. And credit to all you, so I applaud all of you that are participating or are watching online or listening online as well, so thank you very much. Dennis Brown, I'm excited that you're on council, and as was mentioned, we had a tremendous turnout for people that were looking to serve our community in that capacity as well, we had some terrific applicants, so we're hoping that those folks won't be shy and will continue to stay engaged in the community. It's also just a great testament for people that want to fill critical roles in our community, or be it on our commissions. We now have a planning and zoning commission opening, now that Dennis has moved over to the town council, so if you are interested in any respect, be it working as a volunteer in the community center, or wherever you have passion, please make sure you get plugged in with Heather Ware at our Town Hall, or you can contact me at any time as well, and I'll help get you plugged in. Any last question or comment before we go get some brownies with five minutes left? Anyone with a passion, anything from the council you want to share? Anything from staff you want to add to what we've discussed tonight? Yes, mister?
I just wanted to say, the architectural price you got is outstanding, and that's not just a good price, it's really a great price.
And that includes engineering as well.
Yeah, the, it came in way under budget, which was appreciated, and in fact, the design was, we felt it was pretty critical to move forward, because we thought, again, it needs to be shovel-ready in order to qualify potentially for stimulus, and having the design and engineering completed is a part of that.
We have seen some houses for $85,000 in architectural fees, every day.
Well, good. Very good. Well, thanks again for coming tonight, don't forget to get your treats on the way out, and I will have my cards out there as well, please grab them and don't be shy. Thank you.